And those steel buildings, they get expensive.
He's got a sixty by sixty.
All right. That's what I was looking for, sixty by forty. I just couldn't justify it for non-business.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, no, I mean, built out all of reps on Hemlock and saved quite a lot of money there.
Did you get that up at Parker?
No, it actually came through Viking because they were the only ones that could saw it fast enough. Anyone else was, didn't have enough lumber on the ground.
Have you ever used that yard on the other side of Bangor?
Uh.
I've got. My house is moved to lumber.
Yeah. It's a way to go. I mean, there's only like seventy-four hundred bucks for all the two-by-sixes to build the whole thing. Besides the racks or the trusses.
Yeah. Well, let's look at it.
Yeah. Sorry. It was right under this package.
All right. Five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, we have selectmen Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, town manager Jesse Dunbar, town clerk Sarah Abbott. Also, we have CEO Angie Chamberlain. Howdy has called in sick for tonight's meeting.
I make a, I make a motion to excuse out a good one for tonight's meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Howdy Goodwin for tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Right, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from March tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March tenth.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March tenth. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Warrants, we have warrant number ninety-four for sixteen thousand, three hundred, seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. Ninety-five for thirty thousand, four hundred, seventy-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Can I make a motion to approve warrants ninety-four and ninety-five?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve warrants ninety-four and ninety-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're on to regular business. First thing we have is land use ordinance amendments. Do you want to go with those, Jesse? And then we can ask Angie for questions, or do you want to?
Yep. I can just give a brief overview from your memo. If you have anything or if you have questions.
Yep.
So, there's three separate amendments for the land use ordinance. Each one requires motion if you wish to place it on the warrant. The first is solar definitions. So, it's an amendment to the definitions of solar, residential solar energy systems, commercial solar energy systems, and industrial solar energy systems or solar farm. It's pretty straightforward. These were introduced last town meeting. There was some concern over how it was worded in the definitions. So, the planning board went back and revisited them and made some tweaks to the definitions. If you want to add any more.
Yeah, this, this helps a lot. This is what should be there when everybody votes, so they can understand if they have questions.
Yes, so, yeah, Angie prepared the amendments, explained. Can't let them near practice. Have available up until, I mean, explains it in land use terms. Any questions on this supplement?
Kevin, he looks, will that go?
Yeah, yeah. I was at most of the meetings. I think it reflects a lot more than everyone's trying to do now than what it was before. It just was. It wasn't quite getting to what it was really important. It's a lot better now.
Good.
Great.
Do you want to make motion as you go?
Oh, okay.
Just first, like, throw one for the solar definitions.
Is it the end of that section?
Yep.
I make a motion to certify and sign the ordinance to amend the definitions of residential solar systems, commercial solar systems, and industrial energy systems or solar farms. Request the town manager to place it on the warrant for the town meeting and recommend passage by town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to certify and sign the ordinance to amend the definitions of residential solar energy systems, commercial solar energy systems, and industrial energy solar systems or solar farms. And to request the town manager to place it on the warrant for town meeting and recommend passage by the town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, then the next one, we have a land use that is subdivision.
No, you're still on Bill Andrews. Sorry. It is an amendment, land use ordinance to relocate vegetation.
Oh, here's.
And it's A to performance standards. So, the revegetation requirements are currently in the separate appendix at the end of the ordinance. They're being read into Article Six Performance Standards. These are the minimum guidelines established by Maine Department of Environmental Protection. So, it'll be easier to follow the performance standards.
Just reorganizing and there were changes.
I motion to certify and sign the amendment to the land use ordinance to relocate the revegetation standards from Appendix A to the Performance Standards Section.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to certify and sign an amended amendment to the land use ordinance and to relocate the revegetation standards from Appendix A to Performance Standards Section. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, we have the floodplain.
Yeah, the last one in land use is an amendment to the land use ordinance to replace specific development standards in areas of special flood hazard with reference to the Tremont Floodplain Management Ordinance. That's the first one on here, explanation.
All good? What? So, how was that? I'm just trying to think, Eric, you would know more than I would on that. That's going to bring you up to a floodplain, which is what height? I'm just thinking for new dock construction for you or for anybody, but I mean.
It, it changes with different areas because there's the fetch of waves and everything, so it. Yeah.
It's not going to cause any issues with any new construction, you don't believe?
It's the first one, right?
Just trying to think of what, because we set, like, just for my use, we set our building on the dock yet, I believe where it had to be with flood, and that's what, a foot and a half higher than where my dock is.
I think it was four feet above the floodplain.
Okay.
What their standard is.
Yep.
So, I think it's mandated by that more than anything.
Yeah, this doesn't actually change anything. This, the floodplain standards are in the floodplain management ordinance. So, instead of having specific language in the ordinance that says it's one foot or two feet above, this just simply says you go to the floodplain management ordinance to find.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Get replaced.
Yep.
Motion to certify and sign the amendment to the land use ordinance to replace specific development standards in areas of special flood hazards with references to the Tremont Floodplain Management Ordinance.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to certify and sign an amendment to the land use ordinance to replace specific development standards in areas of special flood hazard with references to the Tremont Floodplain Management Ordinance. Is there any discussion? Thank you for clarifying that, Angie. That makes a lot more sense. All those in favor? Next, we have the subdivision ordinance amendment.
Most of these changes are just how they're organized in the document stand, any substantive changes?
Correct.
Yeah, it's reorganization.
Yeah.
This one's similar relates to the flood zone, flood management.
I make a motion to certify and sign an amendment to the subdivision ordinance to replace specific development standards in areas of special flood hazard with references to the Tremont Floodplain Management Ordinance and add a requirement that any subdivision plan which is, which has a portion of land within special flood hazard area must contain a condition of approval that all development must comply with the Tremont Floodplain Management Ordinance.
Second.
Going to make me read that all again, I check?
I don't know if I can.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I could pull that out. It's been moved and seconded subdivision ordinance amendment as read by Kevin. Or any discussion? There, thought you'd get away with it. All those in favor?
That one didn't really flow off the top.
Yeah, no. Next, we have the site plan review ordinance amendment.
And this one is an amendment to establish a submission deadline for which parties must comply with during the site plan review process.
Yes.
Sure. I'll go again. I make a motion to certify and sign an amendment to the site plan review ordinance to establish a submission deadline for which the parties must comply with during the site plan review process.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to certify and sign an amendment to the site plan review ordinance to establish a submission deadline for which the parties must comply with during a site plan review process. Is there any discussion?
Does that, is that deadline set per each process, or is it going to be specified what that is? That's going to be standard. Yeah, okay, that's what I'm thinking.
That's our clear break is, so the applicant has a set.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two weeks before, and if anyone else wants to submit.
Yeah, just so it's regular, you know, so it's.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, we have floodplain management ordinance.
This one is just to replace the current language specified the fee with the term that we usually use when we update them. The amount is set by the select board from time to time.
Motion to certify and sign the amendment to the floodplain management ordinance to replace specific application fee amounts with references to fees as set from time to time by the select board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to certify and sign an amendment to the floodplain management ordinance to replace specific application fee amounts with references to fees as set from time to time by the select board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I think that's all we have for our ordinance amendment. Yeah, and again, thank you, Angie, for making this, this makes sense a lot easier to people than, than it will the other way. That's, that's awesome. All right. Next, we have the school budget. We've gotten an updated sheet from the school where they removed some things and then had to add back some things, so.
I'm going to start.
Oh, you're going to start.
Andrew, you've got to finish.
Oh, yeah.
So, for the, on the review summary, so on the sheet at the top part, one of the places, the two places where we adjusted is we took a look at the carryover and instead of saving about a thousand, we went to seventy thousand. That makes me a little nervous in terms of carryover because depending on what the spending looks like at the school over next year, that'll play into what would be left for building the twenty-six, twenty-seven measures, so. That's what we, well, comfortable with. State subsidy, we did increase that from what we get from the state. The state had four forty from the preliminary that they sent to us. I think our last budget, we put in four twenty. You never know what's going to happen at the state legislature. But after some conversations with Nicole and some of their members, just sort of thinking of where people are, Nancy and I felt comfortable in going with four thirty on that and leaving that ten thousand just in case things happen and like I said, that's become a surprise. And so, that kind of helped on the revenue side in terms of looking at the budget and all that. January is sort of probably about, or who that, and then some of the spending pieces were.
Thank you. I want to thank Jamie and Jesse too. I had a chance in between our last meeting with you folks and our last school board meeting to be able to sit down and kind of go over some things with them. When we left here, Mike and Nancy, within like twenty-four hours, were taking a look at some of those things that Mike just discussed. We also went back through with a pretty fine tooth comb. We were moving from regular instruction, some desks that during COVID, there was a lot of furniture moving around and all kinds of stuff that we did to make a lot of room. There were some things that ended up in a storage container that we ended up getting rid of after the two years of things being in there because storage containers are dry. And we had some desks that we got from the high school that were pretty old desks. So, anyway, we were able to look through, try to figure out like where can we pull some things together from this year's budget to purchase some of the desks. So, we took out some desks that were in there approximately, I think it was seventy-two hundred that we had in there that we took out of the regular instruction line. We also had gone through and decided to take out the fencing to finish around the ball field, which makes me a little bit nervous, but I also think that I'm trying to figure out through the state if I can use some of the grant money that I have to be able to finish the rest of that fence. We took out the sixty thousand for harem and knowing that like at some point we're going to have to stack that, but right now is not the time for that, so we did take that out. And we were sitting below, below ten percent. We were at nine point like two or something. And then we went to a meeting together at which I was informed that we should expect some students that we did not think that we were going to expect. So, we had not put that in. With some student enrollment changes that we've seen within just the last few weeks, instead of having to add in two additional ed techs. Right now, we've got one additional one in there because of some enrollment changes that has freed a person up a little bit more. We're using them differently for the remainder of the school year, but knowing that, that next year that position is going to, it's already in this year's budget, we're going to need it for next year. But we did have to add in additional ed techs. So, that is kind of where, where those final numbers sit right now. When I talked with Jamie and Jesse, I just reiterated the fact that the only thing that I have left in the budget that I originally put in when we started to draft the budget in November is the three walls of thirty thousand that we put in to be able to build three walls. And I think it's just really important. However, we can try to get the word out to people to remember that like the budget process starts far, far earlier beyond the Tremont school budget. And then, and then there's a lot of things that get folded into the Tremont budget too that beyond things that are contractual and whatnot, the changes that happen annually, there's a lot that comes into that that I don't have any control over as the, the school principal. So, the things that right now that I, that I do have control over to some extent, I don't have control over the support that we need for students through I U Bs. The additional ed tech is something that is a requirement. And then the thirty thousand for the three walls to be able to create smaller offices or safe spaces for the building. Other than that, though, the other pieces that are creating this are just the things that are required through, through salary benefits increases, through health insurance, through like A O S or high school portions that we pay in. Those are the types of things that either they get passed before and then they get rolled into our budget and by the time of year, see you guys, those things are set already or they're contractual and I don't have the ability to. And the unfortunate thing is I know that Pola is where people love to see us sit, but I think from the get-go, there isn't anything in my control that allows us to start there. If that makes sense, I don't know if I'm being clear about that, but. So, I, I hope that, that you feel like we really have gone back to like take another look at this, pull out whatever we felt like we could, even though some of it is a little bit uncomfortable. But I don't know with, without looking at positions and people, I don't know. I don't have a great answer as to where else to go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know it's hard.
No.
I know everybody, it feels frustrating and it doesn't feel good. And the last thing we want to do is cut programs or positions. So, we, I appreciate you guys going back and sharpening your pencil again. We, all, all of the departments, everybody has to do it this year. It's just here we are, so.
Yep. And, and again, like, it's been reiterated multiple times that, that it's not for lack of support of the children nor, you know, the, what we're trying to do. So, I, I do appreciate that. I do understand the situation that, that we're lower than what you see there. And then we kind of all looked at each other and gave it. Another, another administrator came and was like, can you play us one? So, a lot of them was like Nancy. So, anyways, that's kind of not the goals of how we got here. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for me too, for looking into this. And as I said when we met, I think this is more than reasonable. I think from what, speak on behalf of the board, I think everybody was looking for just something. And I think that, that initial, you know, anything was something. I think that was, that was great. And like Mackenzie said, we definitely don't ever want to be cutting programs or affect, you know, schooling. So, I think that's, you've done what you can and you can't, you can't help what, if you need more help, we understand.
Yeah, well, thank you.
More teachers.
I appreciate it. Yeah, that's something to be proud of. So, thank you.
I think the only other part on the, thinking on the revenue side is we always, we won't go until April with lacrosse blue shield, you know, I was meeting with superintendents last week and their ratings are different as ours, depending on how you group your folks together. But some of their numbers were higher in terms of what they were budgeting. I think based on what Nancy and I have been seeing with usage, you know, as soon as those numbers come in, we will see what that looks like for each town and make a decision that it makes sense to then do something on the floor. And we'd be prepared to do that if it is favorable to folks, so keep an eye on that.
Now, I'd like to say thanks to, I know the last meeting wasn't great.
At all, and I, I fully, I feel the support. I don't feel, I, while I always feel nervous speaking in front of Tremont, I, I feel welcome and supported when I come to speak. So, I, that's not the case at all. It's just trying to, middle management is tricky sometimes. So, so it, it, you know, I think, I hope that you trust that we are really trying to put together what is necessary but not what is extravagant. And, and there's more work to do, you know, like there will be conversations we do have to have, I think, moving forward about rebuilding and whatnot, but. And I never have any idea what's coming really like, you know, next in September. I, who actually walks through the doors is kind of a mystery. You kind of guess at some time. But I, I think we're at a place where we've had to say like, we've got to get them forward with some of which break out to the board. And right now, this is, that's why we have reserves in some other places as if there's something else that comes up that it's a surprise, but to be able to keep this process moving forward. So, I appreciate the support very much.
Eric, do you have anything?
No, no, it looks great. Thank you for looking at it again.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. And moving into next year, again, we'll continue to reach out, I guess, as we start this process. We'll like, if anybody wants to come over, we are more than welcome to.
Yeah, and maybe if there is going to be a larger increase next year, maybe we should start before, well before, you know, the budget season so we can kind of practice and work through those stages.
Yep.
You know, with the school board, with you, or just whatever, just an update would be great.
Happy to.
So, all the stuff that comes in on this is the high school, obviously, right?
Um, there is.
How does that all work?
The high school would be separate, their assessment would be separate from that. The A O S is part of your budget in three different areas, like special ed, curriculum part, and then the mic to my office under system administration.
So, we got to cut Mike's pay? Yeah, no, it looks good, thank you. Someone's got to do some reading.
Your amount is going to be the town appropriation amount.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Four million five eight seven one.
Yeah, you can't, oh, I know, Kevin, it hurts. If you get Kevin to make your motion, you know you've got support. You can cry a little bit, Kevin, it's all right.
I've moved to request the town manager to include four million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars as the Tremont School Fund appropriation for the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include four million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars as a Tremont School Fund appropriation in the F Y twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion?
It hurt.
Yeah. All those in favor? Thank you. Yeah, thanks again for putting the work into it and modifying things a little bit. Appreciate it very much. We, it's, it's no fun being on our end sometimes too, but we have a job.
I would say I'd trade with you, but I can't do your job.
Yeah.
I would love to laugh best.
Mike would be on the phone in about forty-five minutes, yeah.
I'll be there later.
All right, next, we have budget prep for the Wharf Harbor and Seal Cove budgets. Start with the Wharf, Jesse?
I'm going to start with the Wharf. The harbor committee, Matt, on Thursday, to redo these three budgets. As a reminder, they're all outside of.
And they're all outside of taxation. These generated, so there's a transfer, you'll see, in there over to the general funds. So starting out with the Wharf, I'll just go over the bigger highlights. There's, most of it's fairly minimal increases. But in the Wharf fund on revenues, you'll see the first one, Wharf use permit fees. FY twenty-five is a budget of sixty-four thousand. The estimate for FY twenty-five is actually eighty thousand six forty-five. That is what we have received to date in FY twenty-five. So we always budget this year receipts as next year's amount. So as you can see, it's considerably higher. Part of it is due to Tyler collecting Wharf fees on Wharf, making sure on Sundays on Wharf that they have the fee to do the dividend on Wharf and collecting some late fees as well. So he's done a good job at bringing in the revenue for the Wharf. Wharf garage rent, you can see that amount is seven thousand. That's where we negotiated with the garage tenant to use it seven months of the year and us to use it in the winter. So what we initially thought was going to be zero revenue turned into seven thousand dollars compared to the previous twelve when it was rented. You'll notice, not for FY twenty-six, but right next to it in the twenty-five column under bring up proceeds, those are the fifteen thousand dollar grant from Island Institute to finish the Harbor Master facility as well as approximately seventy-two thousand from FEMA for the Wharf damage. Still waiting for that to come in. It's looking like June may be with the state. So the fund balance at the end, I won't really go into because it's different than the audit because I'm not counting that revenue until we receive it. You'll see when you get the audit that they did go in and use it as anticipated revenues for FY twenty-four. So that's when that technically happened. But I'm not updating our document until it actually arrives. The interest there you'll see is zeroed out because technically that account is negative at the moment with those Wharf damages, so I haven't accounted for any interest there. On the next page, again, just a note for FY twenty-five, you'll see the transfer in from the general fund of forty thousand dollars. That was the amount at town meetings authorized from the surplus funds to go towards the Harbor Master facility and the garage repairs. So you're looking at total revenues for FY twenty-six of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-five. On the expense side, everything's fairly minimal, just cost of living increases, adjustments to over, you know, past three years averages. Nothing in particular to really point out. It brings your total expenses to twenty-eight thousand nine oh seven. Well, right above that, you'll see four thousand dollars. That's to pay back the forty that was loaned from the town. So that's a transfer into the general fund. The warrant article is a ten-year repayment at zero percent interest. And right above that, they did leave out, every year we transfer a small amount to the Wharf capital reserve. I just left ahead for this budget, waiting to see what is happening with all of the funds. And we've got grants and things going on, so well, the better idea of the capital expenses will come here. So all of your motions, whether you get to them or whatever you want to do, it's just for the expenditures. Any questions on the Wharf before we go on to Harvard?
Want to make motions like we did with the rest as we go?
Yeah.
And that's the twenty-eight nine oh seven. I make a motion to, a motion to tentatively accept the Wharf fund budget for the total amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars in fiscal year twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the Wharf fund budget for a total expenditure of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars in the FY twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, yeah, we have the harbor fund.
On the revenue side, mostly minimal. The transient float fee is up about a little over double based on last year's revenues. Swans Island and French Borough had agreed during last year to increase their fees from two thousand a piece to three thousand a piece. We're working on that. We're already with very terminal floats and we'll probably have an update at an upcoming meeting. I think the harbor committee's going to talk about it at their next meeting. But due to the original proposal, the slide board gave Swans and French Borough, you gave them the option of splitting the cost upfront with us at ten thousand a piece for increasing their annual fee. They chose the fee increase which has us footing the bill for a number of years to recover those costs of floats. Due to all the damages and things in the harbor and the Wharf, we've not proceeded with paying for those float replacements. So we're going to revisit what the town's decision is on investing in that or seeking more funds from them upfront. I did hear today that potentially this one of those onboard would just pay their share now to get the floats on their construction. So it'll be at an upcoming meeting.
And this has been, just to be clear on that, that's been some time. That's been like two years we made that decision, right?
Ah, I'd have to look. I think it was early last year.
Was it last year?
Could have been late near before.
Cause we made.
I think it was before, didn't it?
Yeah, cause we had. Our, our expense was like three thousand dollars a year each way for the floats. Cause it's three floats down there and then.
Right, we have to come up with thirty thousand upfront. Our Tremont share with the grant is thirty, so it's ten a piece for each of the towns.
But I meant the yearly up.
Yeah.
Was like three thousand a piece each way, so it's like six thousand dollars in transportation of just the floats. And then I think it was, what was it to set the ramp, Eric, wasn't that?
Two fifty.
Two fifty each way, says another five hundred.
Right.
Plus chains, it's costing the town, you know.
So there's not really anything being left over to pay for the float.
Yep.
Continuing on revenues, you'll see the interest earned increases sharply based on the rate we negotiated with the banks last fall. So your total revenue for the harbor is up a bit at fifty-three six eight seven. On the expense side, there's nothing really. Everything's fairly minimal, either up or down one way or the other based on the averages of cost of living. Gives you a annual expense of eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. This one I can, we can talk about fund balance because there's no grants or anything going on yet. So you will see that it's twenty-five and twenty-six and it'll add significantly to that fund balance where we had last year shifted the Harbor Master salaries out of those two funds. So you'll see we're currently running at around twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand, which is where it usually stays for quite an extended year. It doesn't move much each year. But at the end of FY twenty-five, we should be adding forty-one, so the balance should go up to sixty-five. And then again, the next year. So it should accumulate fairly quickly moving forward based on that change last year.
Is the Harbor Master using the town truck now?
Um, yeah, it's started to be, but not yet.
Yeah.
Great, yes.
I motioned to tentatively accept the Harbor Fund budget for total expenditures of eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars in FY twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the Harbor Fund budget for the total expenditure of eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars in the FY twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have Seal Cove.
Seal Cove, being the smallest of them all, there's not much change in the revenues other than the interest again, based on the interest rates and just adjustments based on the averages of the last three years of cost of living. So your total revenues are just down slightly at sixty-four sixty-two. On the expense side, again, no major changes. Total expenditures are fifty-eight oh four, which has you adding a whopping six hundred and fifty dollars to fund.
What's the boat ramp repair coming from that?
That is coming, it will come out of that fund balance that currently has twenty-three thousand dollars.
So that was down three and a half percent?
Yeah, and the part of that was the, you'll see on the Wharf use permit fees at the very top.
Mm-hmm.
Some of that was just a loss of Wharf use permits. Some of it was, they switched to bad, sorry, uh, to.
Yep. Yep.
Motion to tentatively accept the Seal Cove fund budget for total expenditures of five thousand eight hundred and four dollars in FY twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to tentatively accept the Seal Cove fund bound budget for the total expenditure of five thousand eight hundred and four dollars in FY twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next we have the budget prep. We've already approved the budget for the Tremont Volunteer Fire Department. We spoke about a truck they were looking to purchase. You were going to give some lease information and bring it back to us. Jesse, do you want to summarize it first or go right to Keith on the?
I can just summarize. The cost estimate for the pickup they're looking for is sixty-five to seventy-one thousand. You talked about the lease. Fire chief got a quote from Ford leasing on a sixty-two thousand dollar purchase. The rate on the municipal lease was eight point nine eight percent for five years. That comes out to about fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-seven per year. Keith suggested perhaps a local lender would have a lower interest rate, so I did reach out to one for comparison. That sheet is in your packet. She did do it around sixty-five thousand, just in case the truck came in a little while. It is a lower rate at five point oh eight percent for five years. Comes out to about fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-two per year. I haven't put any of those numbers in the budget document, since that budget will change. Guys, have any questions or?
I'll go first. When you lease a truck after whatever the term is, five years or two years, you turn it in, you don't own the truck. When you lease a vehicle, you lease it for X amount of time. And then when your time is up on the lease, you don't own it, right? You either turn it in and renew the lease or you buy the truck again. Is that how a lease works?
No, at the final payment, the, and a municipal lease or a lease similar to what, you're paying the full balance. Whereas a traditional automotive lease, you're only paying like thirty-eight percent on the full vehicle and turn it back in. But we'll be paying the full balance of the vehicle and the ownership will come through the town.
And remind me, cause I wasn't here, so I do a little backup. What's wrong with the other pickup truck that we have?
Uh, we've been planning for three years to update it and it's just been taking this long.
I, I think she was asking why it's being updated.
Oh, why?
Yeah, I mean, it'll only go ten thousand miles on it, right?
I had fourteen, uh, cause we want to, our intention is to change the, the use of the truck. The answer was in at the last meeting. So the new pickup truck will also be a first responder vehicle to ambulance and medical calls. And the compartment we had to put on the back has to be able to be locked to contain oxygen bottles and equipment and stuff like that. But also it'll have, it'll have cameras, which when this truck was manufactured, didn't have backup cameras, which is a new requirement for NPA for any vehicle that's produced, even regular cars. So, so we had looked into the cost of updating it with backup aftermarket market cameras and stuff. But when we first started talking about this three years ago, it was only about, the vehicle, the vehicle we looked at replacing three years ago was fifty-four thousand dollars. So it wasn't that drastic, but in three years that we waited, it stayed increased that much, so.
This truck also, the current truck can't haul the, the, whatever you're going to put in the back, right?
You or I would think it would, but it clearly says rate on the glove box, not designed for camper trucks.
Yeah, the capacity is different.
But it also has, all new fire apparatus has to have electronic remote doors that can't be manual, hey, windows, has to have electric windows, so you can roll your window down at intersections and such things like that to make it have a standard. But basically the thing is, it's, it's a fourteen, fifteen year old truck. So I know it has very little mileage, but eventually it'll keep, you know, it just seems to replace it.
What, did they, were they going to take it in on trade and would that knock this number down or?
Yeah, that was my other question.
Okay.
What happens to the old truck?
Two years ago, the accountant from the town came in and had an issue with us when, when our last truck was purchased, the fire truck. It was delayed by three years or a year and a half and the dealership offered us free maintenance on our current fleet in exchange for being late, delayed. The, so that's town owned trucks, town owned money. And the, it seemed to me that the owners had an issue with intermangling monies and sharing monies and stuff. Well, the truck, the UTV, the boats and those things were actually bought with donation money that the fire department had taken in that wasn't revenue from town. So I don't know, it basically, we're trying not to intermangle money. We're fortunate to have a banker, a retired banker on our board directors and he suggested that we keep the money separate, sell the truck and that the town would have clear ownership of this truck. We wouldn't have to donate it to the town, we wouldn't have to accept the donation. But, I mean, I don't know, just trying to play by the rules and keep it simplified.
So where does that money go if you get rid of the old truck, say it again?
Back into the fire department fund.
Goes to the fire department fund, doesn't go towards this truck.
Right, and it is their truck currently.
So we clarified in.
Cause we gave it back to them.
Right.
In our request to, to, to this lightening, we wanted to sell the current truck for whatever value we get. We wanted to buy the. We wanted to buy the rather expensive box that goes in the back of the truck. I mean, we're just trying to keep money straight, so it'll still be equipment, it'll go to the town, but we're not buying a truck that has a title and should keep the accountants happy. We also need surplus money, we wanted to buy a two-level trailer that would have our ice rescue boat and our cold water boat on the same trailer. So we're gonna put the money back into specialized equipment for the town without, I mean, I don't know, it just seemed.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So just to be a hundred percent clear, you, you're asking the town to pay for this truck and the truck, the truck belongs to the town?
Right.
It's just being used by the fire department?
Right. As, as are the entire rest of the fleet.
Okay, yeah, I know there's been a lot of confusion, I just wanted that very clear.
So in twenty thirteen, the town couldn't afford it. Um, they plan out, told us that, so instead of us getting extended cab or larger cab fire apparatus, we, we, we decided that we'd get regular cab apparatus. And that this current truck would keep those expensive half-million-dollar trucks off the road during storms and we'd have this truck. It also gets used for students to go to the academy. So it's been, it's been really useful piece of apparatus. Um, but at the time, we posed it to the town, they just, uh, I mean, they couldn't even pay us our annual money that year from not having. So unfortunately, we were, uh, we had purchased the truck ourselves through donations and, um, we've had it so. And there was an issue then when people were concerned that it would be insured by the town, but it's a fire department truck. And so this should clarify everything.
Yeah, just looking at the numbers too, I definitely wouldn't go with that lease just because of what the local, obviously the local bank, um. What bank is that, Jesse, or does that not?
Uh, like, should.
Okay, gotcha.
How do we justify a truck when we've just sent the school board back to the drawing board? I mean, I just think that we have to be very careful and we really kind of made them go back and sharpen their pencils. And I don't think that this is necessary right now. They have a truck that they can use, it's not ideal, I understand that. Um, with the revow and all the other things going on, I mean, we're trying to build a public safety building. We're trying to figure out the ambulance situation right now. I mean, we have a million other things happening right now and I don't think it's fair for us to say, yeah, sure, when we just had to send the school back to the drawing board. But that's.
Yeah. Keith?
Uh, I just, the, the new truck has so much more, collision avoidance, backup sensors, cameras, hotspot, navigation. It's got a lot different technology than what the old truck had. And it's, it's all, it's mostly driven by safety, it's not a need. But we also have an old truck that's been planned on coming offline for years now. It's not like a new need anymore, but a lot of these things aren't required.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from and I also understand where Mackenzie's coming from as well, that, um, it's, it's just hard to, you know, like I said, to gendry of that. It's our job to try to keep your taxes, so we know, Keith, you'll be the first one to complain where that, if that's gone up a dollar. So how much that's gonna cost you per household you have. So, uh, we, you know, that's our, that's what we have to do, so it's.
Yeah.
Um, and we are, like you said, we're, we know we have to be looking into the, the, um, well, the, the fire department, I guess, is a little bit more long-term. But the ambulance service is a must, you know, that's not something that we've really chosen, kind of been thrown on our lap, so we all know that's not gonna be cheap. Um, and I think that, you know, with this fire department building, we're putting a hundred thousand into that this year too, correct? Yeah, there was, well, fif- fifty technically, yeah, fifty because the other fifty went, uh, out of the sale. Yeah, that's right. I know, it's a hard, so I understand. Eric, Kevin, anything?
I mean, I feel the same as everybody, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's been some. I'm, I'm wondering if some of that safety bu- building money, you know, redirecting some of that would make any sense, probably not in the long run.
I, I don't.
That's the only thing I could think.
I would be more willing to give money than I would take from that because I think that's an absolute need that we're all.
That's kind of a last.
I think everybody's looking for that, you know, that's.
Yeah.
That ties the ambulance, you know, that's, that's everything together, so we have to, you know, I was actually, you know, trying to figure out if we could put more into it this year. Because we won't hit all at once with a, with a large amount that we have to come up with.
Percentage-wise, um, your budget at municipal, property tax is needed for the municipal budget, is currently sitting at three point seven percent increase. If you add the truck, that goes to four point seven percent.
And?
Fourteen thousand dollars.
That's fourteen thousand? Yeah. And then what's your, um, school budget? What is that? You know, the combination, what is that, give us for an increase?
Uh, the total's six point three.
Six point three, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I always do. Um, how much is that per hundred thou- we consider the average house now about four hundred-ish?
Four hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an additional two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Annually.
Annual, that's for sure.
Annually, yeah.
The thing, I, I did bring up last week, I guess, that, um, we're putting twenty grand a year to the solar field that, that we were approved for too. So that's, that's money that, building up reserve that may potentially be voted on in the future versus something that's gonna happen now.
Yeah, what do we have, uh, yeah, speaking of that, what do we have in there and what is the purchase price and what are our years on that too? I know it was.
It should be coming up soon.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it should be within like two years, shouldn't it?
I think the bio was one forty-eight if I remember right.
Uh, one sixty, uh, see, the one sixty-eight, one eighty-six.
Okay, so let's put one seventy.
It's currently, uh, at the end of this year, it has ninety-two thousand five hundred forty in it there. With the budget, so end of next year is a hundred and fourteen.
And when is that term up, do you know off the top of your head there?
Um, it's, no, it's October of either twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so that's right here too.
Yeah, I was gonna say that much a year in electric.
Yeah, but I mean.
What's doing, I mean, the schools, electric runs over twenty-five hundred a month, doesn't it?
Yeah, it did, I remember the few months that we had a breakdown of that thing and all of a sudden, we're getting bills like you wouldn't even believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna, I mean, we've still got sixty thousand roughly more to save up than that.
Wouldn't it make more sense to put it before the voters whether they want to revive it first and then start saving money? I mean, that's aside from the fire department budget, but it just seemed, doesn't seem funny that putting money aside for something that, you know, you never get approved or voted on, so.
I know, but that's, you know, that's how we do everything, like the safety building, we're, we're saving up for that. And, um, just, you know, projecting that everyone's gonna be open to the, to wanting it. And, um, if it didn't get used, then what would it do, just roll back over, Jesse, into the general?
Yeah, the, the town would vote on using it or something else.
And just, um, for argument's sake here, what are we, what will we have after this budget? Including a hundred thousand into that safety building from this year, what will we have in there?
So at the end of FY twenty-six?
Yep.
Four twenty-eight oh five.
Okay, so, yeah, we've got.
It's more than one, okay, good, I mean, we're well on our way.
Yeah, we've got a hundred and twenty thousand, no, it's good, but we're, um, just in pre, these are all preliminary numbers, but just rough idea, kind of all of us. I think we've gotten, Dave has looked into, um, some grants, um, we've gotten the, the chance of a possibility of fifty-fifty grant. But still, we're talking about eight hundred thousand, I think, is what we'll have to come up with. So that still leaves us four hundred to go after, after this year, so.
And that's important, I mean, that's something that we really have got to.
Yeah.
I'm not for the truck, but I'm one person. I just don't think it's the right time, I just don't think it's fair across the board. Their budget went up six thousand dollars, their regular operating, everything, and then on top of that.
Yeah, some reason South West Harbor Police Department decided that they need to go up significantly on the cost of dispatch, which that was the injury of the public call.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, budgets go up, I'm not saying that six thousand dollars is anybody's fault or any.
I know, that's a hard, that's a hard one. Kevin, Eric, I need to put you on the spot, but what are you thinking?
I, I keep thinking of replacing a truck with fourteen thousand miles on it, to be honest with you, that just keeps hitting me in the.
But only after three years.
I wish, I wish I had a vehicle with that few miles on it.
And if that one only has fourteen thousand miles on it, how much is this one gonna move?
Yeah.
The intent was ten years long, like all of the other ones.
Yeah. No, and I understand, like, I, I totally get where you guys are coming from, I'm just, I hope you understand where some of the stuff I hear coming from, that it's, it's just, uh, you know, you have to cut some stuff to be able to keep this number under control and, and to be able to afford to live here still. And also to be able to, uh, um, save up for some of these huge big picture items like the safety and, and, uh, you know, obviously the fire department's gonna expand massively when this all happens in the, or, you know, massively.
Our planning now too is that steps, side steps, when we get a start plan to divide the fire truck.
Yeah.
Then, and this new pickup is gonna be ten thousand dollars more in two years.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah. Now I get it.
How else did, we have started working with the ambulance, we've got five new members and our Tremont members are joining. That's why this is gonna be more of a first responder setup, not a can, a fiddler and, and other equipment on this new pickup.
Yeah.
Not just, just a truck to ride around in since storms.
Yeah. Um, what do you guys have for members now? You have five new ones, what's your total?
This is five guys that are joining the, the, uh, role of membership on the ambulance service.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry, I missed.
Drive and respond and be first responders, do other, as, as a member of the ambulance.
Yeah.
I'd like to have the new truck, but, uh, with the huge increase with the ambulance service, that also makes it tough and school and everything else, I think we should wait a year. Sucks, but I think it would be pretty sweet to have that first responder truck set up. So when they leave their house, if they get, you know, they don't have to go as far to get to wherever they gotta go and have stuff that might get there faster than an ambulance. But I just don't think it's the right year to buy it, unfortunately, um. Let's throw him out.
Someone wanna make a motion? Or do you? Jesse, do you need a motion either way or whatever?
No, I only need a motion if you're increasing what you are.
Okay, so everybody, just to be clear, so we understand, Eric says wait another year, Mackenzie says wait, Kevin says wait. Um, yep, and I think I agree that it's probably not the, you know, not that we don't need it and we don't support what you're doing. We just are, I think we're showing our support very much with, um, as much work as we're putting into the safety building and, and, uh, how much money we're setting aside for that, so.
The ambulance committee, have we decided when that's, when we start meeting, when does that like flare up?
Yeah, I just sent an email right before this meeting started, to schedule the first meeting for April tenth.
Okay, so that's gonna get going, so you're gonna wait?
Yeah.
That's you, isn't it?
Yeah, 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 thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna put, uh, we're not disappointed or unhappy with your decision, I, I completely understand it. Um, we just, we've had a board, uh, as a private company, we try to present stuff to you, we're trying to structure it with a new truck coming. And that's why we tried to replace that truck three years ago. But we're, we are super thankful that you're on board with a new public safety building and putting funds into that. Um, it's just us as a micro entity to the town, we're trying to, uh, offer as many services we can.
Oh, sure, we, we understand that.
And we appreciate that, it's just like what we said to this school, I mean, it stinks no matter which way you go.
But sometimes we just gotta do what we gotta do, and it sucks. But, I mean, I'll, I'll be in charge of a bake sale or something if you want, I will come down and help raise some money.
Once again, that's not your place here.
Yeah, that's not true, yeah.
Oh, perfect.
No, thank you, the fire department agrees.
I can't cook, but I'm in the baking department.
Eric gets an A for effort.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Alright. I guess we're moving on to the next item, which is, uh, uh, our last budget item here.
Yeah.
It includes, uh, Selfless Harbor, uh, law enforcement, we finally get their increase for this year.
Yeah, so their increase, um, actually came back in only an increase of thirty-seven hundred and forty-four dollars over the FY twenty-five amount. They were able to restructure their, um, CIP reserves, um, last year. Tremont funded, you know, half of those, um, as part of the budget. And, um, we had some discussions with them, due to the way budgeting and town meetings work. Selfless Harbor met first last year, so they could not count the three hundred and thirty-six thousand from Tremont as a revenue in their annual town meeting because we voted second. Um, so that was going in as basically excess revenue, um, for the town of Selfless Harbor this year. Um, I had some meetings with the manager over there and they've decided to utilize some of those, um, some of that three hundred and thirty-six to fill their CIP reserves. And therefore, there's no increase to Selfless Harbor residents in FY twenty-six for reserves. And they're not passing any reserve, um, money requests on to us, um, because they were filled out of last year's funds. Um, so, um, it led to a very.
Did you invite him tonight? The chief, did you invite him?
Yeah, um, it led to a very minimal increase, um, on their budget. And they are fully, as of last week, fully staffed. And that one of the new officers, um, he did work for them years ago, um, but he stopped to introduce himself this week, uh, last week. Um, and I have a, um, another officer that just moved to Tremont, um, and she's starting full-time, she just isn't able to improve her by herself yet. So the academy finishes transferring over her certification from the state she moved from. Um, she is a, was a resource officer in that state, um, school resource officer, so they're looking to make transfer in that licensing to the state domain. She's looking forward to.
Nice.
Working with the schools, um, you know, as to resource officer. So, other than that, um, since your last meeting, there were no, um, additional changes. You didn't make any additional requests for the, um, municipal budget. So the, um, proposed motion there has the, um, costs under focused, answered some of them. Do you have any other changes or questions or?
Keith, did you have a question?
It's not gonna be a lie, but I have, I have stated, I, both personally and professionally, I have not been satisfied with the police department. I don't typically wanna knock another professional emergency agency, but I really strongly encourage the town, continue to look to a better opportunity. You can go back to the sheriff's department, go full-time, follow, and I said, I could be a well-liked statement, but personally and professionally, I think that's what needs to be done.
Yeah, I think now that they're fully staffed, I think it would help, it's gonna help out a lot, to be able to cover this area more.
And being fully staffed, I know he's not here, I was gonna ask him, but. And being fully staffed, I know he's not here, I was gonna ask him, but they'll be around more often, like, what is the, what's the plan now that we're?
I mean, so far, it seems to be, um, the officer that came back, um, part of the reason he applied, um, to come back was because of them adding Tremont, uh, and having more territory to cover, um, and so when I signed last week, he said, you know, we definitely would be seeing him, um, I saw him quite a bit, in the two days last week, um.
Yeah.
More so than at that.
In the last week, I have seen them, I bet you, on a trip from my house to the boatyard and back, I bet I saw them three times. Like, it's just, like, they, it was like a walk, like, it was, they were coming in and out of a spot, and, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
And are they popping in at the school, maybe?
Yeah, they do sometimes, actually, they've been responsible, we've reached out or.
When you've needed.
Been in anything now, so.
Okay.
I've, I've had a couple of neighborhood disturbances, um, one's about three weeks ago, one's just the other night, and I called them, and they were there like five, ten minutes.
Yeah, I think when he gave his pres, our mid-year thing there to catch up, I believe he said, don't quote me on this, but I think it was like six minutes, seven minutes, average call time, was, you know, getting to them, so roughly.
Um, yeah, as far as feedback, we've gotten from residents, um, everybody that has called the police department for something has been very satisfied with the response time, um, which was a big reason that people wanted to go, um, for that. We have had comments about seeing them out and about, which we have relayed, um, to them, so I'm hoping that will, um, improve as the level of staffing is improved.
Any other questions?
No.
I move to request the following amounts in the cost centers listed in the twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting warrant. Administration, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Protections, six hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Debt service, zero. Recreation, thirty thousand. Public works, four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. General assistance, one thousand dollars. Committees, five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Donations to nonprofit organizations, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Solid waste, three hundred and seven dollars, one hun, uh, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Contingency, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Transfers to reserves, one hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Transfer to library fund, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Other revenues, one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Second.
It's been moved and request, uh, moved and seconded, um, to request the following amounts in the cost centers listed on the twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting warrant. Um, administration, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Protections, six hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Debt service, zero dollars. Recreation, thirty thousand dollars. Public works, four hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. General assistance, one thousand dollars. Committees, five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Donations to nonprofit organizations, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Solid waste, three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Contingency, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Uh, transfer to reserves, one hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Transfer to library fund, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, and other revenues for one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? There, Jesse, budget's done. All right, town managers report.
All right, over the last couple of weeks, I did meeting prep, um, your budget updates. Finished my annual report letter, um, renewed the property and casualty insurance, had a budget meeting with, uh, principal, had a meeting with main postary trust on, uh, a water access project they're working on, and attended the coverage meeting. Office staff was busy with DMV reports, voter changes, um, K D attended a DMV training on renewing, uh, license plates, the state is considering the man. Um, part finished our annual report letter, worked on the select board minutes, local filings, warrant prep, and town meeting prep. Um, public works is busy treating roads, repairing equipment, uh, picked up from free, sander from allied equipment, working on the job of the year, and changing products deal. The harbor master attended, um, annual harbor master training in Castine, harbor, attended the harbor committee meeting, trash cleanup, office work, um, some conversations with the town attorney regarding an abandoned vessel, and for the next few weeks, I will be attending the M T C M A manager conference in Bangor, and finalizing the warrant for your action.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Um, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
What are we gonna do next week, or is there any reason?
Yeah.
Just to finalize it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give her a fine, just to stand. No adding anything, Jesse.
Okay, I make a motion to set the, uh, next meeting for Monday, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, five p.m. at the town office.
It's been moved and seconded, confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, five p.m. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned? All those in favor?
Thank you, everybody, sorry about budget cuts.
I know, it's the worst part of the year.